Grade six. Last but not least, Gwendolyn Voltz from grade six. From Shapiro's Tim Academy, Mason Hoff in second grade. And from Oakwood Elementary School, Mackenzie Christiansen. Mackenzie's in third grade. Also from Oakwood Elementary, Billy Byrd in third grade. From Jefferson Elementary School, Charlotte La Busse in third grade. From Roosevelt Elementary School, Kennedy Maslowski in fifth grade. And from Carl Trager Elementary School, third grade Sophie Fletcher. Also from Carl Trager Elementary School is Emma Lieberkin in grade three. From Lakeside Elementary School, first grader Owen Hale. From Franklin Elementary School, fourth grader Alexandria Jollin. Also from Franklin Elementary School, fourth grader Elijah Wilder. Fourth grader Gabriella Demas. Fourth grader Savannah Baker. Also from Franklin, fourth grader Aaliyah Atkins. And last but not least, from Franklin Elementary School, fourth grader Riley Mangur.
Actually, I do have one left.
One left, and that's going to be Smith Elementary School, our fourth grader Lizzy Lett. Excellent job, all these wonderful, wonderful and excellent works of art to our young artists in the room. Thank you so much for being here tonight. And Dr. Harris.
I do say, one of the art teachers from the school district in the room, Mr. James Maury. Are there any other art teachers in the room tonight? Let's give another big round of applause to our. All right, now you're all welcome to stay. This is an exciting meeting, and I don't have other things to do. We fully understand. Thank you so much for coming, and congratulations to all our young artists. Well, next we will move on to board and administrative reports, starting with the board president's report. I always look forward to this evening because we have a chance to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of our students and the excellent mentoring that they receive from our district art teachers. And in keeping with that, there are many other things we can celebrate. I know that it's always a disadvantage to start making a list because you always leave something off. But I do want to highlight some things that either I've been involved with over the last couple of weeks or I've known about. And for those that I've overlooked, I apologize, but these are just representative of the many wonderful things that we can celebrate every day in our school district. First of all, I want to give a shout out to the Oshkosh Communities Program at North High School. They have done an excellent job of promoting the need to vote on our election day of November 6th. I don't know if it's a cause and effect, but I do know that they helped many people in the community, many of our young people, be able to vote for the first time. And in the Webster Stanley District, which involves Ward 7 and 8 in the city of Oshkosh, the turnout was about 70 percent, which was outstanding. So kudos to the Oshkosh North Communities Program and your excellent job of promoting the need to exercise the right to vote. There were two meet and greet sessions with our new superintendent, Dr. Vicki Cartwright, held on October 23rd and on November 3rd. And I want to give a special thank you to our food service for providing treats for us on those occasions, to the executive team members who attended, and of course, all the community members who turned out to meet Dr. Cartwright and also interact with our executive team. There are several other celebrations I want to note, and one is the Oshkosh West Band Concert last week, which came after the meet and greet of the new superintendent. That was very well attended, and again, another excellent concert by one of our music groups. The Oshkosh North Play brought a lot of entertainment, a lot of laughs and enjoyment to those who attended. Gallery Walk was held last Saturday night, the first Saturday of November. There was an all-city art celebration at the Masonic Temple, and every school was represented with artwork, which was just amazing to those of us who feel like we don't have much art talent, and I'll include myself in that number. But to our many talented students throughout the district and their teachers, it was just an outstanding performance. I also want to draw your attention to some special events coming up this weekend. As a former social studies teacher, history is very important to me. And the year 1918 marked the beginning of, or actually, the end of World War I. That was supposed to be the world war that would end all wars, that we would never have another war. We know that that's not true, and many young people from communities across the United States put on the uniform of our country to defend us and our various freedoms. In recognition of the 100th anniversary of the ending of World War I, there are some special events going on in our community. On November 9th, at 8:45, Carl Trager Elementary School is holding a special breakfast and Veterans Day Ceremony. On November 9th, at 10:30, South Park Middle School is holding a special program that morning at their school. Sunday, November 11th, at 1:00 PM, Oshkosh West High School is holding a special Veterans Day Ceremony in the area of the Military Honor Roll, and there will be a special wreath laying ceremony at 2:00 PM. And finally, on November 12th, at Oshkosh North High School, there will be a special breakfast for veterans, followed by a Veterans Day Program at 10:00 AM, and then they will provide lunch for the veterans at 11:00 AM. On November 11th, which is the exact day for the armistice or the ending of World War I, there will be a special event in the city of Oshkosh. The Oshkosh Public Museum has sponsored a series of events all year long to recognize the end of World War I. And that war ended officially on November 11th at 11:00 AM. So the 11th month, the 11th day, and the 11th hour. So at 11:00 AM on this coming Sunday, expect to hear bells ring throughout the city of Oshkosh. That's not a mistake, it's not a time for alarm, but it's just a recognition of one group, many groups of veterans who have defended our freedoms in this country. So it's time for us to remember the sacrifices of so many who have contributed so much to this great country. So with that, I will turn the report part of our meeting over to the superintendent, Dr. Cartwright.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. So we again have a lot of celebrations that we want to call to your attention this evening. Beginning at Carl Trager and Perry Tipler Middle School, we had Ben McAlson, an award-winning author, recently spent the day inspiring students at both of those schools as well as the Alps Program. During his visit, he provided and discussed writing ideas to young writers in a writer's workshop. As he challenged students to begin writing the story of their own lives, he encouraged them to be passionate about their dreams and to stand up for victims being bullied and to always be true to themselves. At Oshkosh North High School, the art program has been very busy. Art students recently worked together to carve 80 pumpkins for a Halloween event at the Hendrock Wetlands Reserves. Additionally, students enrolled in Photo One recently visited Thousand Islands Environmental Center to capture still and moving objects while concentrating on the adjustment of shutter speeds. Lastly, art students recently explored the Milwaukee Art Museum, coming face to face with similar and new favorite artists and artworks. At Carl Trager Elementary School, kindergarteners recently completed their first unit of study and writing. They worked on putting ideas on paper with pictures and words, and to celebrate, the entire school welcomed them into the world of writers as they paraded through the hallways, proudly holding their first piece of published writing. At Washington Elementary School's first graders recently participated in a fontis and penal phonics spelling and word study lesson. Students worked together to read a poem and identify high-frequency words. The Oshkosh West High School Band had two students perform in the Wisconsin School Music Association's 2018 State Honors Project. Senior Connor Faust played bassoon and contrabassoon in the State Honors Orchestra. So as you're looking at the pictures, the instrument at the top is the actual contrabassoon, whereas the instrument at the bottom is the bassoon. And contra, meaning lower, is actually an entire octave lower than the bassoon, which matches typically a tuba, so if you can imagine, it's an octave lower than the tuba. Senior Carter Evan played the bassoon in the State Honors Band. This State Honors music project is nationally recognized as one of the finest opportunities for young people. Students selected for the project participate in an intensive four-day summer camp in June and perform in Madison during late October as a part of the Wisconsin State Music Conference. So congratulations to both of those young men. Students at Oshkosh North High School had the opportunity to experience a haunted house and celebrate the many talents of their fellow classmates. The Haunted House Experience was created by North students in the school's encompass and intellectual disability programs. As a result of the collaboration efforts, students were able to learn from one another, strengthen their teamwork and collaboration skills, learn how to plan and execute an event, and practice speaking with decision-makers and customers. Great job, Oshkosh North students. During the month of October, many students at Oakwood Elementary School participated in the Global Read Aloud. Fourth graders are reading A Boy Called Bat and recently used their critical thinking skills along with their knowledge from reading the book to complete breakout activities. Students worked in teams to solve clues and open locks to get to the next clue. Congratulations to Jack Schreier, a sophomore at Oshkosh North. Jack placed 11th out of 190 runners at the state cross-country meet. I'm going to say that again, 11th out of 190 runners. His time of just over 16 minutes was a personal best for his season. Throughout the Oshkosh Area School District, sixth-grade students are exploring their career interests. Our sixth graders recently had the opportunity to explore a wide variety of career options at Fox Valley Technical College, including touring the Spambauer Aviation and Industrial Center, as well as the Advanced Manufacturing Technology Center. And as you can see, it looks to me they really had a good time. Students at South Park Middle School recently participated in a month-long Be the Nice Kid campaign, complete with Be the Nice Kid clothing. Through the campaign, the school was able to raise $700, which will be donated to continue the spreading of kindness and help those in need, not only at South Park, but in the larger community as well. And here we have three of our wonderful teachers here in the Oshkosh Area School Districts sharing their reflection on why they teach. The individuals on the screen remind us of how supportive and, as always, how encouraging our teachers are to all. We are so grateful for these individuals and for all of our teachers throughout the district. Two of our very own school board members were recently recognized for outstanding involvement and professional development by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Board President Dr. Barbara Harris received a Level 4 member recognition, and Board Member Stephanie Carlin received a Level 1 membership, member recognition. On behalf of the Oshkosh Area School District, I am certainly grateful for their commitment, many contributions, and dedication to excellence. Congratulations and thank you for your service. As superintendent, I'm committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout the Oshkosh. On the screen, you're going to see just a few examples of where I have been spending most of my time for the past two weeks. I think the list is a little bit down, but it was because I was at a conference for a couple days, and we had a couple days of an event for which I had to handle. And then from what Dr. Harris was previously announcing, we just have a slide up there with some additional information in print that individuals can take a look at. And of course, if they want more detailed information, we do encourage community members to please reach out to the front office of the schools. We'll be more than happy to provide detailed level of information that they may need.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cartwright. An impressive list of accomplishments of our students and staff and of your own in terms of how you've been spending your time in our community and in our district. Do we have any other supplemental reports tonight?
We do, and we have our two wonderful speakers that are here tonight from Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West High Schools. So without further ado, I would, if it's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Dr. Harris, I will turn this over to West High School.
Hello, everyone. I'm Michaela Heath, representing Oshkosh West for the November update. So for sports, we're kind of coming on the back end of our fall season. So the swim team, great job, they got third in the conference this year, following up Appleton North and NINA. And the soccer team, as always, they did great this year, especially following the loss of a lot of seniors last year, so I definitely feel that they did a great job this year. Sports to look forward to this winter, basketball, wrestling, gymnastics. Clubs, the school store this year, Blue Vibes, is kind of being revamped. We have a new debit and credit system, and we definitely are working towards getting a lot of new products in there, and it's definitely a great way for the students to all come together and kind of focus on a business aspect, which kind of leads into DECA. DECA is really undergoing an overhaul, I can attest to it, I'm in it, and we really are trying to focus on getting everyone a lot more involved. We went from having nine people to 45.
That's awesome.
In the last year, so it's definitely great to see everyone getting more involved. And the picture on the side is Mr. Scott representing the index. We are going into our third issue coming up next week, and as always, we are working very hard to publish a newspaper. More clubs, up top is a picture from last year, Madrigals. There are, I know a lot of people in it, and they are really working very hard in the mornings. They are constantly practicing, and everyone looks forward to hearing them perform throughout the season. On the bottom left is Sack and Buskin. They fortunately, for their play of The Crucible, which will be playing this weekend, made it to state, which will be next weekend, so they definitely are doing a great job with that. And in the bottom right is Rotary. They are going around businesses and really working within the community to really become more involved, and West students are constantly trying to get out there and help everyone in any way they can. Miscellaneous, our Innovation Lab is currently working on a project called Notes of Thanks November. So we have a box set up in our media center for students to drop by and drop any notes or letters or really anything to recognize firefighters this month and really just acknowledge everything that they do for us as a community. And it's really a great program that everyone is trying to become involved with. The choir this year is, their winter concert is Sounds of the Season. It will be Sunday, December 16th at 2:00 PM in Alberta Kimball. And then those are the teachers. And the band, this year, as we heard earlier, they are doing a great job as always, and their upcoming parade, they're always working hard on that, and we will be having a lot of time for the students to be able to hear them and hear all the hard work. I know a lot of our students at West are involved in the band and is a very large part of our community. Halloween was a very exciting time at West. Our costume contest was very successful. I just threw up some of the pictures that people decided to come and take in the Innovation Lab, so there are some of them.
Another one on the right must be just because she wanted to bring her dog to school.
I think that was it. She took it at home, I think, because she wasn't allowed to. Some more, everyone got very involved. Some went very all-out, as you saw Mr. Scott on the left. And then upcoming events, The Crucible this weekend, like I mentioned, on Friday, they are playing, they are going to be performing at 7:00 PM, on Saturday at 7:00 PM, and then on Sunday at 2:00. And then the parade for the band is going to be November 13th. And then Choir is going to be having an eighth grader meet event in the next month or so. They haven't fully planned it, but it's definitely a great event for students to really see what Choir is all about and really just understand what they do in that. Have a great holiday season.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I'm Maline Bliski from Oshkosh North. So we've had a lot of great things happening the last month at North. Since I was last year, we finished our homecoming week with the game and with the dance. And on the far left is a picture from the pep rally of our Staff Palms routine. And then in the center is the elected homecoming court, and then there's some people having fun at the football game. The music department has been very busy as well. In the top is a picture of the marching band preparing for the homecoming show, and on the bottom left, their performance in the homecoming parade. The band, our band is also working for the parade next week. And in the top right, we had several students go down to Madison last, a few weeks ago, to participate in the WSMA State Honors Project Ensembles. These are two from Choir, and there's one in orchestra. And then on the bottom is a picture from the Choir's Fall Concert. They had a really successful fall concert, as did the orchestra. For our fall athletics, we had a total of 257 this year from our school. And you can see we had three state qualifiers, Courtney Day, Jack Share, and Ally Pecor, as well as five first-team all-FEA performers that are listed there. And a lot of our teams were very successful. If you want to take a look at the rankings, girls tennis finished in third in the FEA, girls golf finished fourth in the FEA, and boys soccer finished fifth in the FEA. So everyone worked really hard, all of our fall athletes this year. Our fall play was just last weekend. It was Harvey, so it was about this man and his imaginary friend, who was a giant rabbit, and you can see them pictured in the painting on the top right. There were a ton of students involved in the play and cast and crew, and it was really successful. We also had our annual Halloween community event a few weeks ago, and that was spectacular. It's always a great way for clubs to get involved in the community at the beginning of the year, and kids from around the area really enjoy getting to have another Halloween event to go to. And then Communities Program hosted a mock election yesterday to give kids who aren't old enough to vote an opportunity to practice voting. And they also educated students with posters about various candidates and got the word out about voting. So coming up, North's hosting a football playoff game on Friday at Titan Stadium. The North Veterans Day Program is on Monday at 10:00 AM in the Fieldhouse. And then the holiday parade with the band next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. And then coming up are more winter sports and holiday concerts and events in December. And that's all?
You had shared, Maline, that there were some students who took part in the all-state music groups at the end of October. Weren't there two sisters who also performed in that?
I don't think so.
Weren't you one of those?
Oh, oh, at least, yeah. I forgot about the middle school one. Yeah, my sister and I were not.
She's like, no, I don't think so. I didn't see your picture up there, but.
Yeah, I had the choir, the girls from Choir.
So which all-state group were you in?
I was in the high school level orchestra, and then my sister was in the middle school level orchestra.
Very cool, they have two sisters from our district participate. Congratulations, that's really quite an accomplishment. Thank you. All right, District Administrator supplemental reports.
Education?
So we submitted for a written report related to property transfer requests that is coming before the board at this point in time. If it's okay with you, Dr. Harris, I'll ask Ms. Schnorr to come up and just do a high level of summary of that.
Thank you.
Stephanie is so rare in the God.
I know Steph is just so anxious to do her report. We will get to her next.
Good evening. We were approached by the Amaro School District because there's a piece of property that the way it's configured was difficult for the landowner, so they are doing a land switch within two property owners in the school district Amaro. Unfortunately, it also crosses the Oshkosh Area School District boundaries as well, so it's just about an equal swap. We're swapping a piece of the Amaro School District to us, and then we're giving a piece to the Amaro School District so that these two property owners can square off their property.
Can we be clear so that this, there's no students on this property? It's a farmland, right? So it's just like.
Correct. It doesn't impact any students, correct?
Yeah, no impact to students or anything like that, and it's just this corner, a piece of property switching to this corner to make it easier for the landowner.
Correct.
It's part of acreage.
Correct.
Any questions for Mrs. Schnorr? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Now we get to committee reports.
Okay.
Mrs. Carlin, you're on.
I was actually so excited to get started because I want to say thank you to these girls who gave their presentation. I really enjoy hearing what you guys have to say when you come through our meetings, and you do such a fantastic job, so thank you. Education meeting is not quite as exciting as some of those things, but we meet on Monday, October 29th at 6:00 PM. And the meeting actually began with an update on the implementation process for the Sonde program. And just to refresh your memory, this is a brand-new initiative curriculum that Vicki has put forward, or Dr. Cartwright, in response to the needs of our students with dyslexia and other literacy needs. I commend Dr. Cartwright and Dr. Brown, as well as Julie Conrad, for taking this on. It's a brand-new program, just started in August, and everything is moving very quickly. It's very much a moving target, but they're doing a great job. Training for Sonde took place on September 6th and 7th with special education and literacy representatives from each school. Literacy teachers are continuing training opportunities for special education and literacy teachers. Dr. Brown reached out to schools to see where they are in the process. Of those that responded, 21 have lessons initiated. Two students. Two students are in the assessment process and one student has completed the assessment process but is in, uh, has not been determined for suitability quite yet. They're in between. A request was made to update the board and parents on the number and levels of students in the program. The board will receive full results from the implementation on May, in May 2, 2019. Dr. Brown explained the need to work with students who have the greatest needs in our district. Students today are entering schools at lower levels than they were just five years ago. Julie Conrad talked about a group she is part of that is looking at what Oshkosh can do as a community to provide early intervention and how our resources can be connected. The district is also collaborating with university staff who work with new teachers to expand training and awareness. There were a number of community members in the meeting and we were able to do kind of a question and ask session regarding implementation of Sonde and moving forward as a whole and where we are headed for the future. I thought it was a very great conversation. I'd like to thank all the community members that came to that meeting for their input and their ongoing dedication to keeping this issue forefront. I really appreciate them and I also appreciate Julie and Kim for their efforts on getting this rolling. Our next meeting is December 6th at 8:30 AM.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Carlin. Are there any other committee reports tonight?
Yes, there is. From the lonely side of the room here.
The only boy. He's the only boy.
Um, the administration compensation committee met early Monday morning and that was after a late Packer Sunday night. So I didn't quite figure that one out when we suggested that time, but, um, well, then the Pixton Executive Director of Human Resources had some topics that she wanted to discuss with the committee. Uh, the first topic discussed was policy language regarding vacation. Historically, administrators have been given an additional month to use, to use any carryover vacation before losing it. The policy needed to reflect this practice. That policy is currently being analyzed to provide an equitable way to manage vacations, which will be beneficial to all groups. It was proposed that instead of allowing an additional month to use any carryover vacation, an additional week of carryover would be allowed until the following fiscal year ending June 30th. This would allow a carryover of 10 days instead of the current five. The second item was a market analysis per policy should be conducted every two years to review salary ranges. Um, it's been over three years since we have done it here. Uh, the policy specifies which districts to use for comparison purposes and there, we will be beginning the process to conduct that study. And the last topic was a discussion on snow days and the feasibility of administrators working from home with the understanding that they are not working, a vacation day would be requested. And it was recommended to contact surrounding districts to see how snow days are handled. It was also decided that the administration compensation committee in the past has met rarely. And it was decided that maybe we should have that quarterly so we can just keep the lines of communication open. So the next meeting is going to be scheduled for January 14th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. With that, we'll move on to non-agenda related public forums. Is there anyone who wanted to address the board this evening on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, are there, is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening on an agenda related topic? Seeing none, we will move on to individually considered resolutions. This is resolution number one. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve the modified start time of 11:00 AM for the Oshkosh North High School graduation ceremony.
So moved?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Nope.
Please call the roll.
Alyson? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. This means that the Oshkosh North High School graduation ceremony in June of 2019 will begin at 11:00 AM instead of the previously noted time of noon. All right, then, let's move on to workshops. We have two workshop items this, this evening. First one is a district-wide data accountability report with Ms. Conrad. Welcome.
Good evening and thank you for having me for our annual data accountability report. And, and hopefully you were, um, I, when I say excited, I, I mean this on purpose. I really do mean this because this is, this is an area that I really, um, enjoy talking about because it gives us a picture of, of our children and how they are as, as learners and all the great work that's going on, going on in our schools. So, um, you got a copy, you should have a copy of the slides, um, in your packet so you can follow along because some of these are going to be hard to read on the screen, but they should be okay for our viewers at home tonight or on streaming on the web. So first off, just as an overview, um, the Wisconsin State Assessment System, and when we talk about large-scale data and we talk about standardized testing, we are looking at the ACT statewide for grade 11. I'll talk a little bit more about that. The ACT Aspire for grades nine and 10, the Wisconsin Forward Exam for grades three through eight. And DLM stands for Dynamic Learning Maps and that is for the 1% of the population that has severe cognitive disabilities. Okay? Hmm? Okay. Um, severe cognitive disabilities. Um, in addition, this data set, these data sets inform our school and our district report cards and the next workshop in December, we'll be talking about those. Those will be released later in November. So as a reminder, when we look at our priority areas in our strategic plan, the data that we are talking about tonight really informs how we are doing in priority area one and priority area five within our strategic plan. You're going to notice that in the presentation, there will be designations like P 1.5. And so what that means is that's priority area one and then question area five because as the board was looking at, how do we measure how we're doing with the strategic plan? These were data points that the board was very interested in saying, yes, this is going to point us in the right direction. Are we making an impact on improving student learning? And so you're going to see those designations on the slide. So when we look at data sources, um, those data sources that are listed up there are in addition to what we are using, um, when it comes to state assessments because we should not be, state assessments are one time of the year and they are what we call lagging indicators. So all of the data that we're looking at happened last school year. So since, since students took these assessments and since we got the results back, we have already put into place, we've already reviewed it, we've put into place plans, action steps, et cetera, to respond or, or to actually celebrate some of the things that, um, we have seen in growth in student learning. So these are our internal assessment data pieces and other data indicators because we need to remember that students are not a data point, they are not a number, and there's other factors that come into what impacts a, a child's learning. So the first thing that we're going to have up is talking about the ACT. And so this is a hot, um, this is a hot topic. And the ACT composite that we have up here is for our graduates. There's a, there's a, ACT is reported two times for, uh, high school or for the high school level. It's reported at grade 11 and then reported for our actual graduates. It's because after a student takes it in grade 11, a student can go back and say, okay, I'm not satisfied with my score. I want to try this again and then go back and do it. So the, the data that's reflected here is for the class of 2018 and what their composite was after they had the opportunity to take it multiple, you know, possibly take it multiple times. And so those are all the same scores there and just please note, you can see the increase in the number of students taking it because remember that, uh, it's a universal assessment now going there. So we had a, we had a nice growth in our composite and we're up 20.3. So P 1.7, remember this is priority area one, and this was a question that the board asked. How successful is the overall student population on the ACT? And as you can see in their writing, doesn't mean that we're not performing in writing. Writing is, um, is out of 12 points rather than the traditional 36. So when you take a look at that. And so overall for our 11th graders, our composite was at 19.6. And math and science, our STEM areas continue to be an area of strength for our high schoolers. Another question that the board has asked is four years, Oshkosh area school district graduation rate. How, how are we performing there? And the last time I gave this, um, presentation, we had the class of 2016, the class of 2017. We're, we are up and we are at a 91.1% graduation rate. And the state, uh, we're at our five-year graduation rate, we're at 93.4%. And our six-year graduation rate is at 94% because sometimes some of our students needs a little bit longer than four years, um, in order to do that. So how long does it take students to graduate high school as compared to the state? Oshkosh is in blue and the state is in, the state is in red. And so you can see that we have consistently outperformed the state in our, um, in our graduation rate. Then it's often asked, how are we doing compared to our athletic conference when it comes to graduation rate? And you can see where the state is and where Oshkosh is with our graduation rate. And then, um, with our, with our, with our athletic conference, some of the schools and some of the school districts are not the same size. So we went and looked at, what is our four-year graduation rate compared with, um, with other districts? And remember that Oshkosh is the 11th largest school district in the state. And so here's the top 11, um, of where we're at. Here's the top 11. So we're, we're at the top. So another question that's often asked is what are those initial post-secondary, um, what are those enrollment trends? What, what about exit?
I was trying to get rid of the bar.
Oh, there it went.
It went away.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for the, thank you for that. So, um, this is priority area five. So are students college, directing those partnerships to be college career and community ready? And so here are post-secondary enrollment trends. In the bottom right-hand corner, um, if you look at the class of 2017, 42.1% of students enrolled and that certified enrolled into a post-secondary two-year or four-year college. And, um, and that seems to be alarming to a lot of people. I'm not, I'm actually not surprised because the, the trend in the state is also going down as well. But the question is, is this leads us to additional questions. We don't have the data in yet, the certified data as far as what did students report they were going to do and do those, do those two things match? As you can see, our two-year technical college enrollment has been stable and it's really our four-year university. So what, what are students, what are students doing? So that leads us to looking at the next slide here.
Excuse me, could we just go back to that?
Sure. Absolutely.
For a second. I was confused by this slide.
Yep.
Um, in the top two rows where you have two percentages, one above the other one and the, the lower one is in parenths. What's, what do those mean?
So the one, the one in parenths is what the students re, self-reported that they were going to do. So, um, so if you come over to the class of 2013, 50% of the class of 2013 self-reported that they were going to go to a four-year college or university. 37.3% actually enrolled in a college or university. So then the two-year technical college, it was 19.2, but then 22.9% actually enrolled. And so the data for the class of 2017, that hasn't come, that hasn't come out yet. So, and then I've already, and this is what's, what's really great about data is that it provides a flashlight, it provides a marker to start looking deeper into things. And we've been working with our high school teachers on academic and career planning. This data's been very interesting to them and they're like, what, we want to know, where's the class of 2018? And we're going, okay, well, wait a minute, they just enrolled like how many weeks ago? So, um, so, so hold on here, um, but, but it's wonderful that we're asking about that because we want to know what our students are and what's, what's our impact? What's the impact of our adult actions on, on our students? But then also are we adjusting and planning things to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and where, where their hopes and dreams and where they're saying their plans are taking them? So going on to this next slide, um, this, this is also, um, priority area five and taking a look at this, this, this is very interesting to me. So the class of 2013, your initial enrollment directly out of high school was 55.8%. But if you look up there, as of this fall, as of this fall, only 55.8% enrolled directly out of high school, but now out of the whole entire class, 70.3% have enrolled somewhere. And so what you can see as the trend is, and this is, this is where we're having the conversations, are, are students taking a gap year? Are students going, we've, we've done a great job with financial literacy and are they going, do I have, do I have the financial money to do that? Do I need to work for, so we're, we're exploring that. It leads to more questions every single time by taking a look at, now, what is this going to look like for the class of 2017? Are they delaying enrollment? So it just leads to more, it leads to more questions. So this, the next question here is what is the trend in math proficiency? So we're switching gears to, um, graduation and what happened with students there, but what is the trend overall for students in the forward exam? Um, as we start to go into these graphs and take a look at this, I want you to keep in mind where the, um, where the vertical axes are. And so notice, just so that you can see the graph here, um, the axe, the origin isn't 0%. So just keep that in mind when you're taking a look at these, so we can see that. So the state in all of these graphs, the state's going to be red and Oshkosh is going to be blue. So as you start to go through here. So you can see our trend in math proficiency from 15, 16, 16, 17, 17, 18. And we want to show you the graphs this way with trends because now we are, now we really have three years of data for the forward exam, um, where before it was WKCE Badger Forward, then it was Badger Forward, Forward. Now we're on three years of the same assessment and you can start to see the, um, the trend in Oshkosh as we have, we're trending up. So how are we performing by grade level? Oshkosh is in the blue and, um, red is in, red is the state. Um, we, and once again, none of these are surprises, do you notice, from our internal data. So as soon as you see this, you're going, your first question is, what's going on in sixth grade?
And we're killing it in fourth grade.
Yeah, exactly. And so the, the thing about fourth grade is what, what do you think happened with the students that were in fourth grade? But, so K-5 Bridges curriculum, we have a new elementary math curriculum. And so you're starting to see, you're starting to see that movement within the, within the math curriculum.
That's huge.
Mm-hmm. And what we're finding out with, what we're finding out with our, with our sixth graders is those sixth graders were the students that had everyday math. And then we were trying to, then, we have some curriculum gaps and we're filling those in. So, and we know that.
Okay.
So we're working through that. Eighth grade overall in the state is a very rigorous test and the eighth grade math assessment has been trending down for the, you'll, you'll see that when we get to the trend pieces. So how is the OASD performing by grade level? This is grades nine and 10. So this is the ACT Aspire and you can see where Oshkosh is and compared to the state. And ACT Aspire has been given over the last four years. That one has been consistent. Then here is our ACT math and the percent considered proficient. You can see where Oshkosh is compared to the state. And so a lot of times when you talk about the ACT, you want to change that into like a composite score. So I, that, what that means is 20.2 and 19.9 when you look at the state. So sometimes that's a little bit easier to decide. So one of the questions the board asked when it came to how are we doing is how many students are proficient in math by eighth grade? Being proficient in math by eighth grade is a key indicator of on-time graduation, um, at the end of high school. And so on the forward exam, we had 38% of eighth graders were proficient or advanced. Um, and then this is a key indicator. We have an end-of-the-year math assessment which measures your, your pre-algebra skills getting ready to go into, um, high school. And we had 74.8% were, um, were proficient and that was a 5%, 5.4% increase going from there.
So from the, okay, I just want to make sure I understand it. At the beginning of the year?
Mm-hmm.
No, that was in spring. So 38% are at 38, are at, uh, in the, in the spring of 2018, we have 38% of eighth graders are proficient or advanced.
On the forward exam. So on our internal end-of-the-year math assessment based on our curriculum, so on our eighth-grade curriculum, 74.8% were proficient.
And when do they take that exam?
They take that in May.
So from spring to May, whatever spring is, what, March or April?
Spring is April, May.
So it's the same time?
It's the same time.
Got it.
It's two different, it's two different tasks.
Gotcha.
It's two different tasks. So if we're talking about their pre-algebra skills, that's where, and that's a 5.4% increase from last year.
Got it.
So when we look at this, where are we with our comparables when it comes to how we are performing in math? And you can see where the state averages and then where Oshkosh is compared to other school districts and other school districts over time. It's, um, it's sorted by the 2018 school year. So, and then here's just another look of the comparison between districts in math. And you can see where, you can see where Ashgosh is. And so another look. So, we're going to be moving into literacy and reading. And so another question is, is how is the OASD performing by grade level in reading? Grades K-one, two, our state assessment is PAL. So, we're required to give an early literacy or early reading screener. And so that's PALs. And so this is the percent of students reading at benchmark on the PALs literacy screener. And so combining it, you can see where the district is. I want to point one thing out. You can see that there's been, there's been a steady decline in kindergarten. And one thing that we're finding as we're digging in our data is that, and I believe Ms. Carlin had said this from the, actually the education committee, is that our students are coming in at a lower point or with a lower number of readiness, hitting readiness benchmarks. And so, so for some of this, we're, we're not surprised by where the numbers are because students are coming in with larger, students are coming in with larger gaps.
Excuse me, are we doing anything with the 4K program or with Head Start or other educational groups?
Actually, we're doing this community-wide. And so there is a community-wide organization or committee called the State of the Child that's going on, organized by the United Way, Winnebago County, Health Services, Head Start, all of those groups are involved in that. And right now, we are looking at, how do we tackle that as a community? So, because that's a community, that's community, because our first teachers are our, our parents or our families. So, what is the trend in ELA? And here's a reminder here, ELA stands for English Language, English Language Arts. And when we do an English Language Arts assessment, everybody goes, oh, this is how students are reading. I want to back that up here because ELA actually is a measure of reading, writing, and listening on the forward exam. So, it's a combination of all three. So, there, it's not, reading is not teased out into these, into these data points. So, you can see where, over time, where Ashgosh is in the state. We have made some, we have made some gains, but we've also trended down a little bit, just as the state has trended down a little bit. Here is how we are performing at, by grade. You can see in the early grades, we are below the state average. But as we start to get into seventh and eighth grade, we have made some really good gains in ELA at the, at the middle school level.
Are they different curricula or, like, what do you contribute?
Part of, part of the things that we contribute at is our middle schools have been very focused on, on literacy. And, and especially the writing, the writing pieces. And so if you look at each of the middle schools' goals, that's, that's what they're really focused on.
I have a question, you might not know the answer. But we keep comparing these numbers to the Wisconsin average. And as a whole, how is Wisconsin? Are we doing a good job or do you know how other states are doing?
So, the Wis, well, the Wisconsin forward, yeah, no, no, but let, let's just put this together. So, the Wisconsin, the Wisconsin forward is specific to Wisconsin. So, there's not another state taking the, the same, the same type of that. But the, but the ACT goes, we can say that goes across, goes across states. And Wisconsin as a state as a whole is doing very well. And, yes.
If I may also, Ms. Carlin, and that's one of the national conversations that has been going on for a long time. Originally, a few years back, as we know, there was the huge push for Common Core. And then there was the two systems that had come out, that was the Park Assessment and then also the Smart.
Smarter Balanced.
Thank you, Smarter Balanced Assessment. And one of the goals, the conversation many years ago was so that you could start having those statewide comparisons. As it is in today's times, what's happening is each legislature delegates responsibility, but it has set some expectations for like the Departments of Public Instruction or State Boards of Education and to go in and set what those cut scores are that are considered to be proficiency levels. And so, because that will change and that methodology is different in every single state right now, that is why you cannot compare state to state unless it is a nationally-normed assessment or not, or nationally-given assessment such as ACT, SAT, or sometimes we hear about the NAP exam. Those, those are the ones that are nationally-based. But statewide assessments, unfortunately, you cannot compare state to state because those cuts, the standard for what is considered to be proficient and is completely different in every state. In addition to that, but also, what does that standard really mean? Can be different in, in every state. So, that's why it's a very good question. But that's to give you an idea and that's oftentimes why districts will oftentimes compare themselves to the state average. Is to just, it's not saying that you, that that's your, it's just to kind of give you an idea of comparison of where you are compared to everything else.
Well, I just did a quick Google search to see if I could find something. And what did come up is that Wisconsin is number eleven as one of the top best states to live in. I just found that, which I think is really cool. That is, so, I don't know.
Yes, ma'am. And, and again, that's what, tonight, we're, we're, we are specifically focusing in on those proficiency scores. And as Ms. Conrad was talking about momentarily, when we come back for the next presentation, when the report cards coming out, that's when we'll actually have a discussion related to growth, which is a totally different type of conversation.
You're welcome. Ms. Conrad?
Another question that goes with, with our strategic plan priority area one is, how many third graders are proficient readers? And so, when you look at the forward exam, remember it's English Language Arts. But this is an indicator, thirty-six point two percent of OASD third graders scored proficient or advanced. Thirty-eight point three percent of OASD elementary students, like overall, so if you put third, fourth, and fifth graders together. And then to kind of give you a clue is like, where's the next level? There was thirty-six percent at, at basic. Then, when we talk about just read, just, just reading. So, when we look at the reading level, how many students are reading at grade level? So, in grades, in everywhere that we're giving the, the DRA, the Developmental Reading Assessment, K-one, two, three, four, five, seventy-four point five percent of students were reading at grade level. And then, in fifth grade, and this is, this has been a big celebration, eighty-eight point five percent of the fifth graders last year were reading at grade level. And so, that's just a, that's just a reading score.
So, it's a pretty big jump. Seventy-four point five is the average of all K through five?
K through five, right.
And so, fifth grade was eighty-eight point five?
Point five percent, which is, which is awesome because we're, we're working with students, right? We're moving them and before they go into the middle school, we really want them to be as many as possible to grade level.
I think that basic number is an important number to know because a lot of people, when they hear that thirty-eight percent scored proficient or advanced, they think everybody else can't read.
Correct. And that's not, that's not true. Basic means is they just, they don't have the additional success criteria.
Just like one point behind.
Correct. So, then how is the Ashgosh area schools performing? Now, we're going to switch into the high school area. So, this is grades nine and ten. And so you can see where the state is with ELA and you can see where Ashgosh is with ELA. Where, and so this is, we've made some, we've, we've made some gains, definitely made some gains there. And so, this is how they are performing, that's in English. This is how they are performing on ACT Aspire reading. And so this is specifically just like ACT-type, type reading. So, there's been a decline in the state and we've been, we've been leveled there. And then, this is how Ashgosh is performing by grade level in ELA. So, the ELA is like a specific score here and there's a proficiency cut, like a cut mark. You can see the state is, has been declining. We, we went down. And to give you a composite score, look at it, it was seventeen point five versus eighteen point one.
So, Julie, the last three show that it's still, overall, we're still kind of like sinking.
A little bit, yep. Yeah, so for this one here, this is English.
Yep.
Yeah, this is English. This is, this is reading, right? And then coming here, we've, we've had some decline there, so, so has the state.
Right, so, so is it the test? If we're all kind of following the same trajectory, it's not an Ashgosh thing. It's like, there's something going on. And if, if we're all using different methodologies, then that means that there's something with the test, right?
So, that, well, it could be. Or the other thing is, it's, it's a flashlight. This is a group of students. This is one group of, this is a different group of students.
This would have to be the same with the, all the students throughout the state?
Correct, it's the same test, correct. It's the same, it's the same test that was given. This is a different group of students. So, when we get to our next presentation, when we talk about growth, you're going to see that even though overall this, this cohort of student didn't, didn't perform as well as compared to the state, I'm really interested to see what, what was their growth and where did they start and how did they move? But as you look at this, this just, every time you look at data, it just leads to more questions. What is, how, how does this impact, what is, what is our curriculum? How are we implementing our curriculum? What interventions are we putting into place? How are we supporting students? And so those are the questions that we're going back and answering every time you see the data pieces.
I think my point was that in all three charts, Ashgosh and the state are generally trending down.
Yep, that is a true statement.
And that's troubling, something to keep on, okay.
So, then here's the comparison for the percent of students proficient and advanced on the forward, forward exam. And this is ELA. So, this is the same chart that you saw for math. And you can see where the state average is and then you can see where, you can see where Ashgosh is in comparison into our comparable and touching districts. So, we have, we have work to do. And we, and we know that we, we know that we have work to do. So, and those are, those are the things that we are in the process of, of do, of doing. And so then you can see, go ahead.
Well, looking at this list, you know, Winnicott is such a small district. And so putting Ashgosh on this list, it's not apples to apples because our school district is so much bigger than some of these ones.
But these are, but these are also the school districts that, that touch us and that are, that are surrounding us. And so, so when you look at this, families have choices of where they, of where they educate their children and so.
And it's a twenty-point spread.
And you, and you want to, and you want to see, you want to see where they are. But, but the, the thing is, is keep in mind, and I've shown you this data before, is that with standardized tests, the best predictor of how a school district or a school is going to do on a standardized test, and it's pretty reliable, is their, is the percent of students that are on free and reduced lunch. Now, my question is, is I want to see the schools and I, and I want to commend the, our schools that are beating the odds. Because that's, that's usually your best predictor, but we're beating the, we're beating the odds.
Well, Fond du Lac, Amro, and Ashgosh are all very, very similar in terms of.
Correct.
So, and even that is a pretty big spread. And Winnicott Kimberly, it's not that much, well, it doesn't matter, okay, sorry.
And so here's a bar graph just representing the data in a, in a different piece. So, then as we are looking at science, this is how, science is only given in fourth and eighth grade. This past assessment has the, had the first sets of questions that are related to next-generation science standards. Remember, eighth grade piloted our new, our new science pieces. And so you can see that I'm, I'm expecting fourth grade's going to pop right up with our new science curriculum. And then, so here is the, here is the trend, here is the trend over time. And remember, Ashgosh is in blue and so you can see our increase in our trends there. This is for grades nine and ten. Ashgosh is in blue and the state is in red. And so this is for our ninth and tenth graders on ACT Aspire. And this is for our eleventh graders on the ACT. And so, once again, Ashgosh is performing the state, but there's that, there's that trend, the ACT, we're trending down. There's, there is some, there is one article that I read that when you look at the ACT, because we're having more and more students taking it, that's also impacting scores and metrics.
I also think, Julie, that some of these, I just want to say this for the public to look at these, to really make sure you look on the left side. Because if you go to the, because it's to scale, you know, if you look at the slide before this, and it looks like we're at a decline there, but it's probably like a half of a percent. Like, it's forty to forty-five there. So, it looks, you know, like it's a big decline, but it's really, I mean, it is, but it's not this drastic. I, I, to look at this with the reason of what's on your left column too.
And, and the rule of thumb is usually five percentage point fluctuation either way is statistically significant.
Okay, thank you.
One, one question on this, the, this slide is labeled at the top, read eleven percent proficient. And I believe that's what the lines show. But then down at the bottom where it says Ashgosh Science twenty point three, statewide Science twenty point two, that's not the proficient percent, is it?
Nope, that is the composite score as, as a reference. Because sometimes when you're talking percent proficient, you're going, that doesn't seem very high. Especially when you say that the composite's twenty point, do you know what I'm saying, the composite's twenty point three. And so that's also referenced on the math slide and on the English slide. So, just as a reference point.
It might be good on a future report to note that those numbers at the bottom are composite scores, not proficient scores.
Sure, we can do that. This is where we are at in social studies. Eighth and tenth grader, Ashgosh is outperforming the state. You will, just a little sneak preview, you are going to be, we are currently looking at K through twelve social studies standards and curriculum right now. And you will be getting more information coming up this spring. So, more, more to come, which will absolutely help our fourth grade.
Julie, I have another question. Regarding the ACT, since fewer students are going on to college, is it possible that some of these kids don't take the test seriously? I mean, if you're not going to go.
Well, let's, let's ask Michaela and Emma Line. What do you guys, what do you guys think about your eleventh grade peers and how they, how are students, how are students feeling about state testing?
Well, I mean, I definitely think that part that, a big factor in that decline is that people who wouldn't have taken it before it was required don't put as much effort into it because they wouldn't have taken it before.
I definitely think that's part of it too. And I feel like there are so many tests that we had, like standardized tests that are being given to students as we're in kindergarten even. And there's just so many throughout the years that I think some students are just looking at it like, oh, this is just another test that we have to take.
And we heard from one of our representatives that the ACT Aspire, that nobody took that seriously, but.
Yeah, that's probably true.
I've heard that.
Just because they're looking at it as something that isn't, it's not going to go, I'm not going to hand this into college. I'm not going to give this to anyone. So, like, it's just another test that doesn't really count towards anything for me. I feel like that's how some students view it.
Right. And, and that's going to, that's going to impact us because the ACT Aspire, not, not this round, but the next round of report, high school report cards, ACT Aspire is going to be used for growth scores. And I've already been doing some number crunching, that's going to impact us. And so, I, I think that's, and it's, I mean, it's the same across the state and with any ninth and tenth graders. But I think that's something that we need to take into account that, you know, sometimes I wonder, is, is everybody giving their best effort? And then the other thing is, this is one day, one point in time, one snapshot. I mean, what if you don't feel well? I mean, what happens then? So, it's, it's, just remember, it's always just one point of information. So, here we are with social studies, eighth and tenth grade, and we did the little preview there. Here is our, here's our trend. This is where Ashgosh is with the state. It's, it's fairly flat with that. All right. We're transitioning into minding the gap. Okay, so this is your performance by subgroup. So, we're going to look at students with disabilities, English language learners, economically disadvantaged, race, and ethnicity. So, this is going to set the, set the plate for us here. Please keep in mind, for our school district, if you are a student with disabilities, students with a seventy-five percent of a student, of our students with disabilities are economically disadvantaged. English language learners, eighty percent of our ELs are economically disadvantaged. And when it comes to race and ethnicity, thirty percent of our white students are economically disadvantaged. Seventy percent of our non-white students are economically disadvantaged. So, as we take a look at this, when, when I take a look at this, there's so many multiple, we're going to slice and dice this a gazillion different ways. But just keep in mind that the over, when I look at this, the overarching piece here is economic, to me, it's economically disadvantaged. So, as we take a look at this. So, jumping right in. So, how are subgroups of students compared to their peers in ELA? So, we're starting off with, with, with race. And you can see some of our, some of our students, this is ACT ELA. So, this is an ACT test and you can see how students are doing compared to their peers. And we would not be surprised that some of those lines are trending down because the ACT for the overall population, right, trended down. So, and this is for ELA, for ACT, this is for our economically disadvantaged students. And you can see where the state is, or where we have, blue is economically disadvantaged, red is not economically disadvantaged. So, and, and before we go into the slides, we all know we have gaps. So, I mean, there's, there are no, there are no surprises here. So, and our, and our jobs is, is like, how are, what are we, supports are we putting in place? How are we closing those gaps and making sure that all means all when we talk? How are we closing those gaps and making sure that all means all when we talk about students, and making sure they have what they need? Um, here's ELA ACT, this is with students with disabilities, and remember that every single student is taking the ACT, except for our most severely cognitively disabled This is ACT math, um, by race, and the percent proficient. And then this is math ACT students with disabilities, students without disabilities. This one, though, is a little bit of a win, notice the little uptick here. Um, and then this is economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged, and the gaps. And then, now we're gonna head into the forward exam, remember the forward exam is your grades three through eight, and so, um, what you're gonna notice here is, there's some really promising, it doesn't, it doesn't look like much when you present the data this way. When you see this, when we start talking about school report cards next month, and we start talking about growth, you're going to really see that impact there. Um, but you're gonna start to see a, a nice upward trend line for our students with disabilities in the area of ELA. This is students with disabilities in the area of math for the forward exam. This is economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged in ELA. This is math for economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged. This is forward exam ELA, this is by race and ethnicity, and we see some nice closing the gaps in this area. Also, here's forward exam with math. This is forward exam ELL, or English language learners versus English proficient. And once again, there's not, we're not surprised with the gap in ELA. Um, here's with forward exam for English learners. And I just flew through those, but, um, I guess the questions and conversations.
Are there any questions or comments? Lot of data to digest.
If I may, also, because it's one, it is a conversation I know is going on in the community, going back to, um, post-secondary outcomes, and, um, it's conversations that I have had the opportunity of speaking with the chancellor with, um, as well as many other leaders within Oshkosh. And one thing to take into consideration when we're taking a look at, where are students who are graduating from high school, where are they going? Um, right now, we have an extremely hot economy, um, and anytime you have a hot economy, and as we all know, we have a very low, um, unemployment rate, and for the most part, um, a student out, straight out of high school can go into a very, um, a reasonably high pay, um, paying job. And so, one of the things that, um, we're discussing right now is really trying to help our students also understand, so what's gonna happen when the economy starts cooling off a little bit? And to be careful and to be cognizant, so whereas maybe the students are concerned because, well, I don't wanna accumulate debt, um, you know, going to college or, or, you know, four-year university, though UWO has probably an extreme, well, has one of the more extremely, um, accommodating rates, um, you know, for, for students in, in our region. The things is, is helping them have an understanding that, you know, you can do both. You can go to college, and you can go and get a, a high-performing job, because once that economy cools off, um, you at least have that college education that you can lean on, which is gonna make you much more marketable, um, than someone who did not go to either a technical, uh, technical degree or, and for a four-year degree, a bachelor's degree. Um, so that is some of the education that we have to put out there, but it also, um, helps explain why, uh, one potential valid reason as to why students are not pursuing the four-year degree right now, um, is because, again, I can go straight out of high school and go straight into a, a high-performing job, and not think what's gonna happen five years down the line. So we have to, we, we have to re-craft the conversation, as you might say, um, to help students think maybe a little bit longer term than shorter term, and, and what can you do as a mixed approach so that you take care of needs both ways? So just wanted to point that out.
Are there comments or questions? Our current strategic plan, as noted earlier, talks about a variety of things, including equity, and, um, when we get into the subgroups, that, the term equity is one that, that speaks to me in that conversation. And we've also had a lot of conversations around this table related to all means all, and we wanna make sure we're meeting the needs of all students. So I believe as the board goes forward this year, and, uh, one of our responsibilities in working with our superintendent is to set goals, and we're, we'll also be looking at a new strategic plan, and so I would expect that this may factor into the conversation. No decisions have been made at this point, but just given the, the nature of conversations that we've had in this room and around these very tables, um, I, I suspect that, um, we will be focusing on results with our students, because it's not, a child is more than a test score, as we know. And helping the child achieve his or her greater potential, um, so that they can do what they want to do post-secondarily is very important, and, and if a student is performing well in school, it opens up any more options for them after school, whether that's military, or going directly into the workforce, or a two-year college, or a four-year college. So it helps that child, but it also helps that family, and ultimately, it helps our community if we have a better educated workforce. So everybody benefits when we have a good public schools in our communities, and to me, that's what this is largely about. It's more than about one child and one test score, or a general test score for a grade.
Absolutely.
So, um, it's, it's important, it's an important piece of what a school board is about in terms of, um, engaging with our community, and we saw some examples of that in the superintendent's good news report tonight, in terms of Fox Valley Tech opening up their doors and allowing our students to go in and explore various careers. I sometimes think that because we have so many manufacturing, um, opportunities in this state, and many of them are behind walls and doors and, and so on, that, that people can't see from the outside, people don't know what goes on in those plants, and so getting the students and the parents connected with those makes a difference. Many of you, most of the people in this room are too young to remember when the, uh, the current maintenance building on South Main Street was actually, uh, I think it was a, Mr. Evans, was that a Coca-Cola?
Yep.
Bottling plant? And there were windows, you could actually see the bottles going through the mechanization process.
Oh, that's cool.
Uh, but there aren't many manufacturers in Oshkosh where you can stand on the sidewalk and look inside and see what, what actually is being produced. So I think a lot of it is, is communication with our students and their parents to see what options are available, and good-paying options for students, so. Anyway, I'm sure we'll be having further conversation about, um, the meaning of these data and what we can do to help all students to improve and become, um, stronger learners with greater potential down the line. Any other questions or comments? And Mrs. Conrad, we thank you for your report.
Thank you.
And, um, did you have anything else after current?
We just have our second report.
Then we're ready for workshop number two, English Speakers of Other Languages, or the ESOL Program Plan, normally, formerly, not normally, formerly, OSLL, with Ms. Conrad and friends.
Yep.
And friends.
So, um, so currently, um, handing out a flyer on our City of Nations and some other information to you is our, is Dawn Shimura. Dawn is our ESOL, formerly known ELL, ESOL Coordinator for the district, and she's going to be helping present, um, she's gonna be helping present this evening. Um, so our vision and mission here.
So in your packet, in your board packet, you had received the, the draft of our ESOL Program Plan, and ESOL stands for English for Speakers of Other Languages. So, and we'll talk, we'll talk about those changes. So, um, so with this, districts around the state are going through a revision to their program plan, because number one, there's been federal and state changes, and how English learners are, are serviced, and how we, um, work with English learners is dictated by federal and state, um, laws and legislation. So first off, um, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has gone through a major revision of their handbook and their policies, and so we got a sneak preview of that, and so a lot of the updating we've done is just a little bit in advance of that in anticipation of those, those changes. So they're undertaking, um, this whole formal rule process, and you're gonna, DPI's gonna formally put that out during the school year. Um, the program plan modifies our current practices and incorporates anticipated new practices, so we're looking forward, and we're also incorporating best practices that, um, we know, um, are out there nationwide and within our state. So, so why the name change, you may be asking, why the name change? The shift in that title recognizes that the, the English learner, the English language learner, is bilingual, and for a lot of our students, they're multilingual, this is their, possibly their third or their fourth language, um, going in this, and we really wanna recognize this, that, that being an English, um, uh, learner, an English learner is not, um, it's, it's not a deficit.
Thank you.
It's not a deficit. So, um, and we're gonna continue to refer, even though the program's gonna be ESOL, the student is still gonna be EL, so they'll refer to them as English learners. And so the other piece is that we're bringing this to you, and you are going, we're going to ask you to approve this plan, um, the next, at your next meeting, because we need to be in compliance with PI thirteen. It aligns to our Title III A requirements within our ESSA Plan, that's the federal requirements, and it reflects the needs of ELs to be college, career, and community-ready as well. So, um, this has been the change in our EL student population, we have really had a shift in that population, um, over time, and so our current eighteen, nineteen numbers are five ninety-five total, and you can see how that shifted over time. And in that, remember that, because with, through Title III, we do service our private and parochial students, and so twenty-four of those students in there are, um, from our private and parochial schools. So that's the shift in numbers over time, so we've definitely had growth within that. And a big part of our growth is our English learners with refugee backgrounds. So Dawn, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
So of those five hundred and ninety-five ELs in our program, you can see at the top there that a hundred and forty-six have refugee background, and that's recent refugee background. Um, they started arriving, this, this current, um, this current population started arriving in about two thousand and thirteen, and continued thereafter, and so we've seen, we've been responding to their needs, and a lot of them, um, have interrupted education pathways. We call that SLIF, um, Students with Limited or Interrupted Formal Education, and we, as a district, have responded to that as well. This is an overview of the processes in general, from the, the moment any student enters into the district, how we identify them, to the point that if, whether, if they are identified, um, the processes that they go through until they finally exit the EL program. Each one of these steps is detailed in the, in the EL, the ESOL Program Plan that we're asking you to, um, look over and, and asking for your approval on. If you look in the upper left-hand side there, that's talking about the Home Language Survey, which is called the HLS form, um, that everyone fills out when they, um, register for the district. Using that form, we determine whether or not they would be potentially an English language learner or not, and then they continue down the flow chart. If they are identified as an English, or a potential English language learner, they are then screened using a WIDA, W-I-D-A screener, it's an online tool that we began using in the district this past year, so this is our second year using that online tool, to determine whether or not they qualify for EL services, and if they do qualify, they continue down on the flow chart, and then we provide services for them, um, until they finally exit the program.
And so for a student that's going to exit the program, every single year, we give, um, we give all of our ELs something called the access test, and so that test for English proficiency, and so when a student hits a level five or a level six, then they are exited from the program and considered to be English proficient. And so when we talk about our ELs or our subgroups, that's the group of students, is students that are, are at levels one, two, three, four, and five within there. So a little bit of highlight within, um, within that program plan. The first thing is supports and accommodations. So each individual EL, um, either through the, through the EL teacher or through the, um, support team, we determine what do they need individually to make sure that they can access the curriculum. You need to remember that in our school district, we just did the tally, we have fifty-nine plus different languages. It was, it was thirty-plus, then it was fifty, and now we're at fifty-nine languages, different languages are spoken. And so depending on the student's background, and depending on their, um, their home language, their primary language, we, we have to determine what do those supports look like, and what is their, um, what is their programming look like? And we look at that in both their instruction and within their assessment. Also with this, we have to consider grading, and we wanna make sure that the ELs are given the opportunity and the tools to demonstrate what they know and to be able to do. Just imagine if you were, pick, pick any country that you choose in any language, and you are recently arrived newcomer, and you know, and you know none of that language, what supports would you need? What would you need in order to be able to access the curriculum and go to school in that country or within that language? That's what we're determining for each one of those students. And the expectation for ELs are the same as for non-English learners, although English learners may need help in demonstrating that knowledge, because once again, they may not have the vocabulary, they don't have the language to demonstrate it yet, right? But you need to remember, like, when we're looking at the ACT scores, we're looking at the forward exam, all of those students, they are taking the same exact test as their English-speaking peers.
And then some recent additions we've had since the last, um, EL Program Plan that we, was approved, is that we've added ATLAS classes, which is acquisition through language and academic supports, not program, they're individual classes that are offered to students as they need it, in response to SLIF, Students with Limited or Interrupted Formal Education. What we are finding, that was that the numbers of students with refugee backgrounds that were coming through, they weren't able to immediately jump into some of those science classes, or math class in particular, or language class, and some of them didn't even know how to read in their own language. So being able to read a language in script was very difficult for them to wrap that concept around their head, so we created ATLAS courses to help fill in the gaps, and they're meant to be very fast, intense, so that they can get into the regular program quickly in one to two years, and just be pushed into the regular classrooms, and they've been very successful.
Very successful.
We started off at North High School, we've expanded, West has had some for a short time with math. Um, we have them, we also moved them into our middle school ceilings over at, um, Tipler and at Merrill Middle. So we offer them as needed, and using our English, our, our ESOL teachers or, um, regular general ed teachers, depending on the course. Um, the WIDA screener, we began using, um, it was formerly the paper-based model, we began using that last year, um, and this is our second year using, it's been, it's been working well. Individual Language Learning Plan, that was revamped about three years ago, we're using CISA six resources to help us work with our teachers to design an individual language learning plan, um, uh, what do you call it, form, or?
Form and process, yep.
Form and process. And then this year, when DPI presented us their ILP form, we found that it was very similar to what we already had, so we scooted some things around, so it looked more aligned to what they had, but in, we didn't really have to make many changes, so that was really nice. Um, the MIP is a new piece, um, that we recently added, um, and that's based on DPI suggestions, and that's the Multiple Indicator Protocol, which, if a student, if you're unsure of whether or not they're ready to exit, they haven't, they're really close, and you, you feel like they are, you can use this, either, there's two different pathways, an observation and data pathway, or a, um, portfolio pathway, and that's called, either one is an MIP, and you can use that to help determine whether or not they're ready. Access scores, like you're Access scores, like what was mentioned earlier, give you one piece of data, one time during the year. Maybe they're not feeling well, maybe they don't test well. But the MIP gives us other options for determining whether or not the student is ready to exit out of the English language learning program. Home Language Survey has been revamped a couple times in the last few years. We sort of liked what we had in this last year. DPI gave us another model, so we transformed into that. We still need to continue working on revising that one because it's not giving us the information back that we'd like to see. There seems to be some misunderstanding from people that are filling out the form. So we'll be working on making that easier for people to complete and getting accurate data.
And we're giving that feedback to the state, to DPI. We've been on the cutting edge of this because they've been looking at us for feedback on implementing this. And we've been feeding that right back to DPI. And they've been very thankful. And we're sharing that with other districts so that they have, they can use that information as well.
And our ESOL documents have all been revised per DPI guidelines. And then now they are uploaded in IC, which makes it so easy for us to not only complete them, but also to share with other teachers.
And that's Infinite Campus, that's our student information system. I know, this thing has so many acronyms. But let's, but let's put it this way, it makes typing an email or typing something up 10 times easier other than like writing all that stuff out all the time. We know what we're talking about, so that's good. All right?
And I don't know, two years ago, I think we start, we developed an interpreter request process. It's a formalized process. So now any staff member in the Ashgosh Area School District knows how to access any language that might be needed for, with interpreter or translation services. Sometimes we're able to support it with in-district language support. We have Kinyawandan, Swahili, Arabic, Kurdish, Turkish, Spanish, Hmong.
I think that's it.
That might be it. And we can handle those in-district and the other ones, we contract with other companies to.
So we cover all 59 languages?
Yes.
Yep, we find, we find ways to do that.
As, as needed, yes.
As needed. As needed. So, go ahead.
One of my fellow board members told me where to find this presentation.
Age 77? Oh, no. All the 59 languages.
So instead of going through the 117 pages of the program plan, we just condense this down into our.
Yep, yep, exactly.
So, excuse me, is this in our packet?
This information is in there, it's just not in the format.
This information is in your packet. It's contained in the ESOL handbook that you, that you got, the program plan that you got. This is just, we didn't think we wanted to go over all 117 pages.
These are highlights of changes that have, that have happened, some key points.
Right.
And that, that chart that you showed earlier, which started with the Home Language Survey in the upper left-hand corner in green, is that in here?
That is in there. That's in the introduction, I believe it is.
It's lined out like one and then two. Yeah, it's lined out.
I was looking for this specific slide.
This one's a little bit, no, I guess you can read it from here, but.
Almost.
Yeah, it's in the program plan.
It's in the, it's in the program plan.
Thank you very much.
All right, so now we want to talk, this is, this is the really fun stuff.
This is more like celebratory type stuff, some of the things that we've been doing, just a little snapshot of some of the extras. This will not be in the program plan, but I just wanted to mention some of the things that are happening. For example, we've been having summer programs that are specifically for our English learners the last three, four years. And they kept growing every year. This past year, we were able to hold summer classes for our newcomer, low-level language learners in K eight, K through eight. We did offer it every other year, K-12. However, we saw a decrease in the interest from our high school students, but for good reasons. They're starting to, they're starting to adjust to life here. And I'll kind of jump ahead there. We had Forward Service Corporations Road to Livelihood Program come in last spring and teach some of our students that were interested in learning how to get a job, how to get a job. And a lot of our students worked this past summer. So what a great step, a transition. They didn't want to take EL class, the ESOL classes. They wanted to work this summer like any other teenage student would be wanting to do. And then we also offered intermediate English language learning classes, which was, it's, they're not newcomers at that low-level language. They're maybe intermediate-level students, but they still need that support and they still need to understand what's happening out in the community. And so during the summertime, we focus on math and literacy, but we also focus on understanding the community as well. Getting out to the libraries, getting, you know, going around, understanding how things work out in the community. Their parents might not know, so they may be able to teach their parents then. The new voices and faces, and I'm passing around the book there.
Please don't, please don't take that print copy, that's our only one.
I did ask for more.
We asked for more.
But that, since we only had two students at the time at West High School signed up for our EL program for the summer, and we didn't have any interest in our, from our staff in teaching this summer, I reached out to the Literacy Council and they agreed to take, to teach these two students. We grew to five and they also collaborated with UW Ashgosh to have this program with five of our ELs from West High School. And they told their story. That was their summer project, was to tell their story.
They're in the bottom right-hand corner.
Yep, and that's a, they had the book reveal about two weeks ago, and that's a picture from the book reveal. And they all attended, they came with parents and, and teachers and, and it was pretty exciting. They were very proud of themselves. And we had middle school students that also want to do this next year. So Dr. Holmes from UW Ashgosh offered to do it not only for our high school students next summer, but do it for our middle school students as well. It really focuses on the strengths and the beauty that exist within our, our students from other countries. And it was just a beautiful program, so really exciting. Bus route training, you see in the upper right-hand picture, we're going around, we're learning the bus routes when they first arrive. And that's, was pretty exciting, reading the maps, getting around Ashgosh. Public speaking, we've had many of our students, we really appreciate it when our students are able to have public speaking activities. For example, at Merrim Middle School, we had one, several of our students actually could speak for MLK Day. Ashgosh North Inter-Cultural Celebration, they have opportunities all day long. If you ever have a chance to attend that event, it's usually held in the spring. It's really a neat event. People from many different, students from many different backgrounds in that very diverse school present and share their culture with the entire Ashgosh community. So if you have a chance to go, it's really a neat event. And that's put based from the ESOL teachers there. Our City of Nations, which is the information I put in front of you there, it's held, it's a second annual conference and it's held in Milwaukee. This year, it's at Concordia University. And we have, they asked me to speak again, but this time they wanted me to bring students. So I have four students with refugee background that will be going with me and they will be each sharing their story and how, how they've been supported and what has helped them in that adjustment to school here in the United States.
And I'm just gonna pause here because Dawn doesn't give herself enough credit. Dawn is a leader in our state when it comes to working with ELs and specifically working with newcomers and students with refugee background. Dawn has gone to many different conferences and has been asked to speak based on our programs, our processes here in the Ashgosh Area School District that Dawn has been a leader in. And we are just, I'm, we are very blessed to have Dawn with us here and, and bringing her expertise in how she has led our teachers and our school community and how you welcome newcomers and especially newcomers with refugee background into school. And she is being recognized throughout the state. The school district is being recognized because of Dawn's work and all of our ESOL teachers. So we're very proud of her. And she doesn't, she doesn't toot her horn very often, so.
Thank you for letting us know.
Well, I couldn't do it without the support of administration and, and the great EL team that we do have. We truly have some really fabulous teachers who are so passionate about what they do. In addition to our City of Nations, World Relief has an event coming up this, at the end of November. And they've asked those same students to speak, so they'll have a second opportunity to speak at an event that's coming up there. In addition to that, we have visits that we go to UW Madison. Our, our high school students, a couple times a year, will get down there and take a field trip and for different events that they have going on. UW Ashgosh Tours, we had a student go to the ESL program in UW Stevens Point this past summer. It's free for them, for anyone who does apply and get accepted. And they get to attend for four weeks, no cheer, everything covered. They live on campus. And if you could see the pictures of the one student that attended on Facebook, he's celebrating everything. He made some great friends and he's just really had a great time and it was really transforming moment for him. So that's an exciting program. Local field trips here around Ashgosh, it's really important that our students get to understand how to get around Ashgosh. And then family outreach, we've been really focusing on that the past, the past year and getting our families involved because when families are, it helps clear up so many areas of potential confusion or, or being, feeling welcomed or knowing who to talk to when we do those family outreach pieces.
And we're only doing part of our work when we integrate our students into, into school. We, it's really about bringing the whole family into our school communities, into our, the community of Ashgosh, so.
In the last picture there on the left, that's the International Cultural Celebration Day at North High School. Those are two of our students sitting there wearing their traditional clothing. On the upper right, that's Ashgosh United photo. And actually, one of our students with refugee background is featured in their, in their marketing materials. So that Ashgosh United has been instrumental in welcoming our students into their program. And as you learned earlier, 80% of our ELs are economically disadvantaged despite that they take them in, they help them with rides, they.
It's been a true community effort.
It has been. And soccer has been huge for a lot of these kids. They feel important, they feel skilled, they feel like they make a difference. And then the lower right is a home visit and to one of our, our apartment buildings that has a lot of our kiddos there, so. And then that, that one is the last picture is an event that we did. It was a collaboration with Catholic Charities, with World Relief and with Ashgosh Area School District. And it was an education for nights for parents. They could come learn about fire safety, are, is it okay to leave your children home Gosh, domestic violence. The topics were, were quite varied. Literacy, if you want to learn English, where do you go? They provided a free meal for the families. And this is them at the last night. So it was just a, a neat event. And it was all, it was all held in Swahili or Kinyawandan, which is the language group that we were focusing on for this particular one.
This was at Reed Elementary School, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, is where we hosted this, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any questions or comments?
I don't know if it would be appropriate, but I'd love to go to one of these.
I was just.
Yeah, I don't know. Have you, have you friended, have you liked the ESOL, have you liked the ESOL page? The Ashgosh Area School District ESOL page? So find us on Facebook and all of that is posted there.
Yeah, I do, we do put like visual menus on the Facebook page, you know, so that they understand what's coming up. Some of them are sensitive to like pork and they don't want to eat pork. So we put little emblems on it too.
And another, and another great story is this summer, we had a new family from China and they were looking for, they were just looking for information. They were on Facebook, they found our, our ELL or ESOL page and started communicating via, you know, via comments and Messenger in there. We, you know, we monitor that. And so, and we caught that and we corresponded back and forth. We said, come, come here, do this, do that. And we got them all registered for school and it started with a contact through our Facebook page.
That's so great.
I know.
I think a lot of people would do that because it's kind of a universal thing. Facebook is so universal, then that would be a really good place for people to go find stuff.
It's ESOL Ashgosh?
It might be underneath ELL still. It might still have that ELL.
We changed the logo, but it might still be under ELL.
I'll find it. Thank you.
And it might be called English Language Learners too. You have to search through it that way. Or you could go to the website. Scroll over to the parent tab, down to English Language Learners and get it there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, this is a good example of all means all. And while no two students of any particular group or subgroup are the same, that certainly holds true with ESOL students or.
EL, English learners.
English learners in the ESOL program. Because those who spend time in refugee camps have different life experiences than those who come to this country directly from an urban setting or a rural setting. And language development is different. And some are literate in their home language and some are not. And those are among the variables. One of the things that has impressed me over the years, having lived in this community for quite a few years, is the success of these students in our community. Whether they're going on to technical college or directly into the world of work, or they're going on to UW Ashgosh or other institutions. Dr. Cartwright and I had an opportunity both in May and in September to interact with a local family. I believe they have four children at least who have gone on to college. And some of those have, some of those individuals have pursued a master's degrees and at least one is pursuing a doctorate. And they're all graduates of the Ashgosh Area School District and all came through the ESL program, within the ESL program. One of the things that I've observed over time is the participation of EL students in our orchestra program, which starts in the elementary school. And there have been entire families of children who are ELs who have participated in that program. And what a difference that has made in the sports programs. And over time, they have been more willing and interested to have their children participate because they often have cultural needs to have children at home after school, to care for younger children or a variety of other things. So it's been, it's been very interesting to me and rewarding to see how the district has served these children and their populations over time. And I just think it's a tribute to the staff, current and previous, who have such passion for serving these children. Individuals who have really devoted their careers to serving this, this population, who might otherwise have gone into a regular classroom, but they find the rewards and the benefits to these children to be such that this is where they want to be. So I applaud you and the rest of the ESOL staff who are making such a positive difference in the lives of these children and their families.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, well, thank you very much. And we'll look forward to the resolution at the next board meeting, which will be November 28th. Moving on then, are, is there anyone who has a request for future agenda items?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, Mrs. Olstead?
We have those, the workbooks.
Yes.
So do we, and then the last meeting Bob had made reference to them, that we want them to be done and worked on before our.
Evaluation.
Evaluation, thank you. So is that true? Is that what you want us to do? Or are we gonna take section by section and talk about them?
I think we need to probably talk about that with Dr. Cartwright, you and I as board president and vice president respectively.
And see what we want to do.
Right.
Because Bob had made a comment about it, so I just wanted to make sure.
We've been touching base with Bob too, and his intent, sure.
Okay, great.
Yes, I'd like to get going on that and I'd like board input on how we might proceed. Are there any announcements at this time? I believe Dr. Cartwright has.
I will disseminate this.
Regarding the plus delta.
So tonight, in accordance to your request, Dr. Harris, Doc, we do have the reflection, things that went well and things that we would like to see to consider for the future. So I'll pass this out and get this back from you later tonight. And we'll go from there. And I have enough copies for all board members, our guest speakers tonight, as well as the executive team.
Wonderful, thank you. This was something that we had learned from Ted Nitsky, the CISA VI director, and decided that we would like to incorporate this into our meetings. And currently, we're incorporating it through the announcement section. We may decide we want to revise board policy since board policy does address what is incorporated into our agendas and we may want to make this into a policy. But for now, we'll handle it under announcements. So you're all welcome to fill this out, turn it back in. You don't. You don't need to put your name on it, you can if you'd like, and we'll review the, the data and share that at the next meeting. All right, with that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for number one, consider the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under Wisconsin statute 19.85, paren 1, paren C. A, consider the employment and performance evaluation data of an administrator. Two, consider strategy for crime detection or prevention. A, discuss school safety strategy. Would you please call the roll?
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, Igerner. Ruzo?
Aye.
Ruzo, Ildan.
Aye.
Olstead, Iposhul. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye.
Thank you very much. With that, this meeting is adjourned into executive session, and therefore, we will move down the hallway.